Okay, we'll call the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Board Special Meeting to Order. First order of business is to, let's see, we have absent Trina and Jody. We have Jennifer as our alternate. So, thank you for doing that. Next is the approval of the minutes from the previous. We don't have those, do we? Okay. Moving right along, public comments. So, I'll call each of your name if you can zip up to the podium. And if you could give your name for the, for the record, we'd appreciate it. And you do have three minutes. Do we have a timer? Got it. Okay, first is Brandon Nelson. Brandon? Again, if you could give your name, and you do have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name's Brandon Nelson. And I've received numerous things in the mail over the years about sidewalks down Central Avenue in Pottstown, and there's still no sidewalks. Right across the street here, the town of Huntersville paid two point three million dollars to purchase Cachen's in September of last year, and there's already beautiful sidewalks there. So, I'm just wondering what the holdup is. Thank you. Oh, and I was here at the last meeting about, there's some industrial guardrails along David Street, and it's the only place in Huntersville that I've seen highway guardrails in a residential community. So, I think those should be taken down, and we need to beautify Pottstown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Shannan Mayfield.
Ready?
I'm ready. If you could give your name and for the rest.
Good evening. I'm Shannan Mayfield. After hearing the preservation plan at the last town meeting, I went and wanted to research some more. I read your plan from the last page to the front page. I did it backwards, yes. Seems like there's a lot of smoke and mirrors, I'm not gonna lie. The plan seems to be more of an urban upgrade plan than a preservation plan. A few buildings will be saved, but not the whole town. We don't want parts of Pottstown saved, we want the whole town saved. If we stay with your narrative, Pottstown will become a whole new development, and the park and gym will become the country club for it. The average income, and I say average loosely, it's a very loose statement because you're blessed if you have this income, is thirty-one thousand dollars a year in Pottstown. That is eighty-eight thousand dollars less than the cost of living in Huntersville right now. What's really happening, from what I see in Pottstown, is a noose of legal loopholes being used to slowly choke out the voices of the people fighting for Pottstown. Smoke and mirrors, friends. I do have a recommendation for the Planning Board, though. Show that you really wanna save Pottstown. You can reach out to Little John Law or Atkins Law, very strong civil rights law firms. They're willing to talk to you. They're willing to look at your preservation plan to see if it falls under the civil rights. Again, Washington DC, civil rights. The Justice Department has reached out, and I will be filing a complaint. I'm just saying, you can either preserve Pottstown the right way and be truthful about it, or are you saying this stuff just to make yourselves feel better for what's really happening in Pottstown?
Thank you. Next is Rachel Zwip.
The, the comment that I'm gonna make today about the plan is that, after doing almost a year of engagement with Neighbor and Concepts, I didn't think about the buy-in from the town. At this point, the town needs to reserve money to actually buy some of the historic homes that may be going up for sale in the near future as a way to actually stop the developers and save those properties. Because if the developers come in, the homes, they're just going to tear them down. So, my ask is that the town set aside funds to actually buy, then partner with different organizations to actually preserve those and bring those back to life so that if, when, let me say when, we get the Pottstown Park completed with the county, that there is walkability to see these, these historic sites. Because there's really nowhere in the town that has the numbers that we do as far as the historic landmarks that can be preserved. And the town, I believe, can find the money to do so.
My name is Chris Wolak. I live in Vermillion. Pottstown is living history, and what's happening to it right now is shameful. Developers are buying up that land and putting in houses that do not fit the character of that neighborhood. This preservation plan seems wonderful in certain aspects, but why is it taking so long? I just found that there was a plan that was started in, like, the report was in twenty-seventeen. That's eight years ago. Why is it taking so long to do something? There's these houses that have already been built, there's nothing you can do about those. But you can do something now about the properties that people are getting calls about all the time, and you know they're just gonna knock the house down and put another one of those things up there. We need to preserve our history, and Pottstown is that history. Thank you.
I'm Verona Nguyen. I'm here to ask that the Planning Board, ask the Town Board to table their vote on this plan. It needs more work. Number one, it needs to define the boundaries of Pottstown. It needs a stated resolution and commitment to the community of Pottstown that they really wanna save it. We need to define and be very specific about what types of legal protection are possible, really, in this day and time for Pottstown, like, what is our overlay district? Are there historic districts that can be defined for our protection? What is legal based on national laws now for neglected communities like Pottstown? Everything in Pottstown should be protected. The people, every piece of dirt, every building. Because you have planned, Christine said, since two thousand seventeen. I know better than that, I'm old enough to know, and been around my parents long enough to know, it's at least been since you codified some of Pottstown or more of Pottstown within the town limits, since nineteen eighty-seven, at least, probably before then. I know my parents were working on trying to get such a plan. Where did it fall short? Gotta make up for the bad things that have happened to Pottstown. That's your duty, that's your moral duty. And so, we ask you, like Rachel, to put your money where your mouth is. Put some money in Pottstown. All right? And there is one good thing about the plan. They ask us to, in the community, to have leaders form a coalition that tries to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Last is Janelle Harris.
Hello, Board, thank y'all for this special meeting. Pottstown, we are, the thing that I feel like is being missed a bit on the plan is the fact that half of us feel disenfranchised in our own community. We're Huntersville residents, we can't vote for our own mayor, we can't depend on the people who are going to take over these plans to continue to advocate for us, and we can't even say that, you know, we're who we want them to be. So, we did try to ask Neighbor and Concepts to, to help y'all figure out how we can deal with the way that, I don't know if there's any other community in Huntersville that's broken down like Pottstown is, because on the acreage that my, and my family trusts, last year I could vote because our mailbox was here, but this year I can't even vote because our mailbox moved to another part of, you know, the land that I own. So, that's a big problem for me. Secondly, I do think that the plan falls short a little bit by not making things immediate in the, the harm that we're feeling like we're facing. It's just not fast enough to be able to, to stop everything that's happening right now. It's just, like you said, the time is taking a lot of time, and then we do need to see some ways that money can circulate within our community. We have so many places, and, you know, we need to be able to let this be a tourism part, like, is what has been talked about in Mecklenburg County. There are just so many opportunities for us to be able to have dollars circulating within our community that we just don't seem to be able to get to because everything's being bought up by people that want Pottstown to look like the Huntersville that I can't even vote for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is, item four, consider a recommendation on the Pottstown Community Preservation Plan. Mr. Pete?
Good evening, Planning Board. I am here tonight to give, for those of you who may have watched last week's public hearing, this presentation will look extremely similar. We just wanna make sure that you are as up to speed as the Town Board is on what, how the plan lays out. And I am here with Eric Roscoe from Neighbor and Concepts. He was one of the team leads on the process, and he'll dive deeper into some of the elements of how everything was created. And I just wanna start the presentation by setting the stage, and I know that you have had a, more than a week to, to take a look at the draft. And wanna preface this by saying that back in June of twenty-four, the Town Board prioritized creating a small area plan for the Pottstown community. And they directed staff to go about a request for qualifications for consultants to assist with this process. And so, we did that and got numerous submittals for the plan. We chose a couple of finalists, and then we decided to go an extra step, and we asked the finalists to speak with representatives of the community. There are several current standing groups made up in the community that have been organizing and working toward improvements and, and different resources for the community. And so, we asked representatives of those groups, or anybody else who was of mind to, to come and, and let them sort of interview, if you will, and make a recommendation. And they, they chose Neighbor and Concepts as well as town's review process, sort of unrelated reviews, but came to the same conclusion. So, that process began in earnest with public engagement in January of this year, moved through, and Eric will elaborate more, but it went through July. And a solid six months of public meetings, public engagements, both on Wednesday nights or Thursday nights, or most of them were on Saturdays, including door-to-door as well. I wanna give you a quick orientation to the area that we're speaking about, and this is generally southeast of downtown Huntersville. It is the area in the solid yellow line, and it is generally bordered on the north by Delwood Street. On the south, it does go, it borders up against the Commerce Park, Industrial Park that you would know where South Wire, it's named something else now, but that would be along Delwood, excuse me, not Delwood, Holbrooks. And you're familiar with the Holbrook Center, the Holbrook Park, and then eventually it would move back to the Greenway Waste Facility and the county's Arrow Park. Now, both of those two items I just mentioned are not included in the study area, but they are adjacent. So, a couple of other things besides the public facilities, there's also the recently renamed, renovated and renamed Delwood Center, which is now the Torrance Lidle Community Center. And then there are another type of anchor for the community would be the three churches that are represented on the map as well, that represent, I won't say large, but significant landholders. And then there are a couple of cemeteries in the community as well. So, those are sort of the highlights. The other important line to, to make note of on this map, and it was touched on by one of the residents who just spoke, and that was, the, that represents the town boundary. So, it's important to keep in mind that there is a percentage of the study area that is within the town limits, and then there is a percentage that is outside of the town limits. Now, that does not impact zoning. You know that our ETJ goes well beyond our corporate limits, but it does very much affect how public tax dollars can be utilized, how services are delivered, and that type of thing. So, there is a, there is a difference to the properties that are inside and outside. But that does not mean that grants and programs and working with our affiliated and allied agencies such as Mecklenburg County, NC DOT, any of those that, that sort of cross those boundaries, we can engage them to, to pursue some of these programs. So, it is a big element of the plan and of the reality of the community, but there are some plans, some scenarios in here that can work across that. The only other thing that I will orient you to, as the Planning Board is always very keen about, is you can see that the zoning districts, you see them in the yellow letters, the neighborhood residential is a lot of it. There is some general residential up along Delwood to the north border, and essentially the NR runs both in and out of the town limit part. And then there's a little bit of corporate business on the bottom, you can see, located there, and then you can see the surrounding zoning as well. So, that is just a quick snapshot of the area that we're discussing. If you have any more detailed questions on that, please feel free to ask us as we go or at the end, however you'd like. But to dive into the elements and how the plan is organized, I'm gonna turn it over to Eric.
Good evening. I am Eric Roscoe. I'm an urban designer, urban planner with the firm of Neighbor and Concepts. So, you know, we're very active in this region, especially with historically disadvantaged communities. Preservation planning is not just an aspect of our Neighbor and Concepts work. I actually work on a lot of these community initiatives myself. I'm a board member of Historic Western Partners, and I helped establish the Community Land Trust in, in Charlotte. So, I do have a certain perspective of what kind of efforts it takes, and those are mainly community organizing. This community is, really has a strong leadership base, but as I emphasized in my previous meeting, I think they're, they do need capacity building just to create that coalition body. And so, they, yes, there are resources to think about, the town supporting this. We started back in January. You can see here, we had five distinct phases. Each phase was a workshop with the community, but also that, that really, we kept meeting, you know, one-on-one meetings with the community members. So, all throughout the process, we were also having one-on-one meetings with them. And also, we even worked with community members to organize their own meetings, and we attended those. So, you know, I'm proud to say that a lot of the engagement was led by the leadership itself. So, they, they helped us go door-to-door and a lot of other great, great things. So, the, definitely the capacity is there, it just needs to be organized a little bit more. You know, this is an example of the kinds of meetings that we had. We had community forums with community advocates from other communities that we, we also work with. And, you know, and we were always keyed in as well, just meeting separately with individual members of the community. So, you know, the stakeholders, you see the leadership of these groups already in, in the audience. I mentioned the community coaches, so let me just quickly mention who they are. Shmae Haynes, who is QC Family Tree Executive Director, but she, she works a lot on these kinds of initiatives in Nendry Lee Park in Charlotte. Ricky Hall from the West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition came, also came, provide advice. And Tiffany Capers, who's now the Executive Director of Renaissance West Community Initiative. And we hope that the community continues, you know, talking to them. They certainly have a lot of deep experience on what it actually means to preserve, you know, you know, not just preserve the buildings, but preserve the people of the community. And there's my team, and as well, our town partners. We had the Historical Landmarks Commission, the CATS, and other partners come also to, you know, be a part of this. So, there were five focus areas that we identified through our community engagement process. We definitely, you know, this is a, this led us to create, you know, not your typical small area plan, which is focused on land use and transportation decisions. Really, the focus of this plan, as a result of our engagement, really began to key in on how we actually preserve the community. And those, and what that means is that the focus area is really focused on two things, community organizing on the side of the, the community, and on the side of the town, that would be preserving the assets, the community, the homes, as well as the institutions of the community. So, thankfully, the town does own and manage one of those, the, you know, the Torrance Lidle Community Center, also known as the Delwood Center. We didn't focus a lot on physical, Indiana, we really didn't find a lot of, a lot of things to address, with respect, apart from preservation. You know, there, there is a major investment effort definitely there in the Torrance Lidle High School restoration, but that's not really led by the town. The town can support that. There's also the thirty-one acres being planned with the county. But the plan does make recommendations with respect to improving the side amenities, the parking areas, and the access to the Torrance Lidle Community Center. So, that, that is one aspect, the physical aspect that, that we do address in the plan. We can definitely consider adding some more, like the guardrails and things like that. The, the framework of the plan is goals. So, we have five goals, and the way to reach those goals is with the, the toolkits. So, there are four toolkits, which are sets of actions, and they all have their individual tools. So, just to quickly describe that, so the, the goals are strengthening community assets, and that includes, like I said, the, the homes and institutions, preserve neighborhood character, and that also includes the activities and the, and the culture of the community, celebrate African-American heritage, advance human dignity and justice, and foster community and belonging. So, we have four different sets of tools to achieve that. It will require all four of them working together, and, and really, these are coordinated fronts of how do you directly meet those goals. So, unlike other small area plans, this is really about strategies and, and actions. We dove deep into what could be done on each, with each tool. So, every tool is gauged in terms of effort, you know, time, as well as cost. These, these numbers, the dollar figures that you see here aren't physical, you know, aren't actual numbers, they're, they're like either, this is one dollar, it means it can be, you know, funded with volunteer labor. Two dollars means we, you know, probably this toolkit, this tool will need some short-term funding sources. And then three dollars means that the tool will demand ongoing levels of fundraising and so forth. So, what this does is categorizing all our tools and their actions this way helps us identify the low-hanging fruit, and, and not to say that, you know, there, there's some things that can be funded to be implemented quicker. Definitely, there's a lot of things that, that can be done right away, within the next six months. So, and we hope that the overlay district is one of those. So, that's something to think about. So, just to quickly go over the toolkits, you know, Toolkit A is about process and improving process and representation, and, and, and actually empowering the community to actually shape their community directly, and, and to have a more say on, on how, you know, how to, how to preserve the Pottstown. So, those are, each, each of these, for example, are, are treated in terms of, you know, what's an effective process. In this case, this, this is a spread from the actual plan, it's actually community-organized discussions with developers. And that is an effective process in other communities, so we made, made sure that we profiled, you know, the other places that are really doing this well, including in Charlotte, but, but also just, you know, the, the most ideal practices that actually do enable communities to stabilize their, their communities. Then Toolkit B is in, in your purview, which is the regular toy tools. And so, here, we're gonna, making a recommendation to consider an overlay district for preservation and housing stability. You know, some municipalities in the state have neighborhood conservation overlays, but there are also several flavors of that. Another key aspect of this that, that could be involved is actually historically designating the homes, so creating a historic district. And that does involve a level of research and, you know, and hopefully some funding to enable that work to proceed. But as well, the town can advance its green development policies with concerns to Pottstown. Pottstown has a really large tree canopy, and that's a, is a great asset to have in that downtown area. So, that is one, one thing to think about, is how to, how to protect that tree canopy. And then what, you know, what green development policies could, could you introduce to, to address that? And then the last thing here is, you know, actually working with the historic designation process to protect and conserve the historic homes. You know, there are historic landmarks in, in the community, but there are a lot of homes that, that could also, you know, be historically designated. So, I think that's something to think about. But also, how do you improve the, you know, the protections that, that go in? Like, for example, what do you do to delay a demolition permit? You know, those kinds of things need, need to be, think about as well. So, those are the examples. For housing stability, these, these tools are community-led initiatives. And one key one that we're, we're talking about is the Community Land Trust. But, but also, we had Shmae Haynes. But also, we had Shmae Haynes from Enderly Park, you know, come speak to us, because they are doing, you know, grassroots-initiated affordable housing development in Enderly Park. So that is certainly something to think about here. Certainly, one of the community-based organizations here can probably take on that kind of work, but they will need funding for that. And the other thing that they could also do is just organize also strategically with, you know, for example, the Ada Jenkins Center, but also the corridor communities, you know, also Smithville and West Davidson, they are organizing themselves as well. And I think creating a strategic coalition with those communities can help share the knowledge, maybe even identify nonprofit resources that can be activated. So that's an example of the kinds of, you know, the community-led initiatives will take some work and some time and some capacity building, but communities in Mecklenburg County are demonstrating that you can do these kinds of things. And they are, you know, this community is fixing homes, so they definitely have the capacity to do these kinds of initiatives. Now, the final toolkit is to target funds from public and nonprofit sources. And we identified seven areas that you could target funding for, you know, grant, finding grants and support from the state. And we delved into those in the last section, the last toolkit. So we did a lot of concerted research. Of course, what's in the purview for the town to fund is the infrastructure upgrades. And I'll turn it back to you, David, just if you want to say something.
So all I really want to do on this part is just kind of underscore, because this particular toolkit deals with the things that you would probably be the most familiar with, which are those brick-and-mortar, infrastructure-type of improvements that we do all throughout town. And it would be encouraging and continuing and expanding those efforts, particularly focused in the Pottstown area. And I'll give you sort of three layers of examples. The first is things that are right now happening. An example would be, I think you're all familiar, there was a traffic calming analysis for Delwood, and the board decided that a couple of speed humps would be appropriate to put into place. And then there would be some monitoring to see how effective it is, should there be more humps on that street, or should there be less, whatever the case may be. Another one that is, last night, there was a meeting about something called advisory shoulders. And I don't know if we've got a, yes, this is a slide here, and I don't want to dive too far into it, but what this is, is an opportunity to create safer, identified pedestrian or bicyclist areas within an existing street right-of-way, without having to go out and acquire additional right-of-way. It would probably be envisioned as maybe a temporary or a stopgap measure for some time before, you know, additional enhancements to a street could be gathered, if that is the desire of the community. So there'd be a lot of communication back and forth on how it's going, what would be the next step, if any, and that type of thing. So that would be, as I said, is current. The next level that I would say is stuff that is already in the works or being studied. And two really great examples of that, there have already been some improvements, the bottom-right corner of the slide, there are some enhancements that have already been put into place at the Wamer Park, but there are more that are coming. The town is working with Mecklenburg County to complete this particular project, and they're looking at some facilities enhancing some of the parking. You can see some pickleball courts, et cetera. That is something that, again, is not done, or, you know, finishing tomorrow, but is very much on the horizon. And then a second good example of what this toolkit embodies is the stormwater project that is going on. I'm not sure if the planning board is completely versed yet, but we've hired an outside consultant to analyze the downtown area, including Pottstown, to see what are the current facilities regarding stormwater? Where are the problematic issues? Where is the opportunities for enhancement? And then, once they sort of conclude, then you're going to have those decisions to be made, probably at the capital improvement program level, of where do we need to build a regional facility so that each lot doesn't have to bear the burden, that type of thing. So again, the analysis portion of that study, my understanding is complete, and, excuse me, the data gathering is complete. The analysis is happening now, and then that will be coming to, should be coming to you and the town board relatively soon. The last little bucket, if you will, in this particular toolkit would be what's on the horizon. And I'm not going to define horizon, but Eric showed you that it could be zero to two years, you know, five to six, six to 10. Somewhere in that mix would be things that the plan identifies that might involve a lot more financial commitment, might involve a lot more time and resources, but that would be a priority that the town would need to set. And those could be things like creating a complete sidewalk network throughout the Pottstown community, or putting, you know, again, this is sort of a, it seems like a light, I mean, a simple thing, but, you know, putting a sign topper that signifies the streets that are in the historic community, or something like that. There's, the plan speaks to, I think you're probably familiar with what we call the Sculpt Tour project that goes down the Greenway downtown. There's public art that is placed, and we change it out on a period, maybe it's a year or two years. And so as Greenways are, and the network is enhanced, then there would be opportunity to expand the Sculpt Tour parallel to the Pottstown community. And there's infinite variations of how you could do that with maybe localized artists, or maybe with a theme, however that would take shape. But again, this toolkit is very wide-ranging. You know, it's that tangible element that you can prioritize and put into practice. It's already been referenced this evening. It's that commitment from the town board that will dictate sort of how far and how much takes place under the goals of the plan. So I think that is all that we wanted to share with you. There is in the back of the plan sheets that look like this, and they break down every goal and every toolkit, and they'll put the actionable statements in there, the tools, rather, and then you'll see that there's a cost at a time. So it's sort of a quick reference that you can use to debate your priorities and work through where the town's going to go from year to year as they work on their budget. So with that, Eric and I are to answer any questions you may have, and we will go from there.
Thank you, thank you. Start off with questions to either staff or the consultant.
Mr. Pete, we'll go back to one of the very first slides where you say EJG founders on, have there been any discussion on including that EJG park in the town? And so what was that about? And are the residents in the EJG who don't want to be in the town aware?
So, so good question. I would say, I don't know that the town has very recently undertaken a sort of holistic meeting to see if all of the property owners are interested in doing that. As you may or may not be aware, you know, state law is always sort of getting tweaked a little bit when it comes to annexation. And involuntary annexation, which is the term for a town saying, "We're going to take an area," regardless of how they feel, is not as broad, or you're not enabled to do that, communities are not able to do that like they used to be many, several decades ago. So what you're looking at is the term voluntary annexation. And that you would be most familiar with, a developer of 200-lot subdivision who's out on the periphery of town, one of the things that they will often do as they're being reviewed is offer the entire property up for annexation. And so because you have the full consent of the ownership, it's really not an issue, it's just a process. What we here at the town are very willing to do and can do is provide an analysis for every resident in Pottstown who is not in the corporate limits, to see how their tax bill would look inside of town and outside of town. Because as you're probably aware, those who are out do not pay the town's tax, but they do pay a fire and a police tax. So is that a wash? I'm not going to say that it's a wash, but it's probably not as far off as maybe some might assume. But no question, adding a town tax is an additional tax. There's really no other way to say that. But it does allow you to be in the conversation and enjoy, you know, infrastructure enhancements and whatnot from the general tax dollar. But when it comes to grants or other things that may be at our disposal from the state level, the federal level, what have you, they don't usually have those types of restrictions or distinctions. They're more broad-based. So, you know, it might be a matter of chasing those dollars as opposed to funding it in a different way. But I'm trying to remember if I caught all parts of your conversation.
Yeah, I was wondering about the funding. Obviously, if it's to the town, they can't really go to that area, but if it's to the area.
Right.
And then it was kind of in reference to the voting, I had assumed the ETGA.
ETGA members, they do not vote in municipal elections. They do vote for the county. But yes, for town board, who would be, not all, but many of these projects would fall within the town's purview, the residents in the ETGA would not have a direct vote. They could certainly be part of a conversation, speak to, you know, form the coalition that's referenced in the beginning of the plan, they could be part of that discussion. But yes, that is a, that is a element that will certainly present some challenges.
Scott?
Mr. Pete, do we know what the county's plans are for the?
The 31 acres?
Yes, sir.
So the county, they acquired the land, and I think they began just a tiny bit of initial planning. My understanding, and I don't know if Brian knows anymore, but I think they have paused it slightly. I don't know if it's sort of an internal discussion they're having, or if they are waiting to have this process complete. They have not stated as much, so don't, you know, but they're aware of this plan's process. We have, and Eric can attest, the community is certainly very concerned about what that 31 acres will look like, and we are as well. And so the plan very much wants to have a relationship with that property and interrelate. But no, we do not, to answer your question, we do not specifically know, but I will tell you in a broad sense, because the land was purchased through the Park and Rec Department at the county, it will have a park role to play for the community. They can't just do anything they want with it. There are some environmentally sensitive portions of the property that will have to pretty much be respected and set aside. But I don't think that precludes some other things, and I'll just, you know, don't hold me to this, but if there were to be some type of, you know, road extension or connection made, or something like that, that may be something that could be entertained. But the town has not been involved in specific pen-and-paper discussions with the county yet, but we expect that they will really begin in earnest fairly soon. And I might add too, just so no one has a false impression, the planning for the property is not the funding of the property. You follow me? So in other words, if they are ready to get going and spend four, five, six months on the plan, then funding whatever it's to be is a separate discussion. So it could be quick or not, it just depends on the county.
Pete?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pete. While you got the map up here, how did we decide the boundaries of Pottstown?
So back in, Brian, help me out, there was a plan called the East Huntersville Revitalization Plan, and it defined the study area that you see to large degree, but there was a little bit of the area north of Delwood that that plan, for some reason, sort of left out. But as the community itself, that represents itself, as well as the way that the town has always sort of seen the community, had that area as part of it as well. So it was just a very natural extension to add just those areas, just a handful of properties that are north of Delwood to include into the area. So it is not, and it was also somewhat tailored by the input historically from the residents as well.
Okay, okay. Because, yeah, I know, as you trickle down Holbrooks, you get to a section down here in the grade that are all new-built homes, right?
Yes.
That seems like they're more Vermillion than they are Pottstown.
That's correct. Well, what you see is, should not be any part of Vermillion.
Yeah, it's not, but the houses have the resemblance, yeah.
Once you get beyond what we're saying is the study area, then you're looking at a phase of Vermillion, or the Greenway Waste Facility, or the county's Arrow Park, and they have obviously very unique connotations and are, you know, much different than the makeup of the Pottstown.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, New Haven Drive itself, those houses are probably from the 60s or so, so they're, I don't know if they're part of Mr. Potts' original property, but seems like, I just, it just seems, okay, I was just trying to have a, get my brain around who is and who isn't Pottstown. That's, it's interesting, it is. My only other question here, I guess, is probably for Brian, is what are we, what are we doing as a planning board here? We're not, we're not looking at an overlay, we're not looking at a small area plan, we're looking at a concept that we just...
Do you endorse the board to recommend approval for this? That's what you're tasked with tonight.
Okay, okay.
Quite simple.
Yeah.
Recommend or don't recommend?
Yeah, gotcha, okay. We're not, we're not testing small area plans, or whether it applies or anything like that. Easy peasy.
Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Pete, somewhere related to this, historic designation, that is a individual choice, right? That a property owner would have to say, "I want my property historically designated." It's not typically something that we or anybody have the ability to say, "We're going to designate this street."
So I want to be careful with that answer, and Eric may have something to add to this, but there are, and our attorney would certainly need to weigh in, a historic, an overlay of any kind, generally, is just like any other facet of a zoning ordinance. And so it can be put into place by the town board without full consent of a resident, if you will. But there is a ratcheting up, because basically you have the underlying zoning, and let's assume that it does not change, if it stays neighborhood residential, for example. An overlay takes all of those rules, or rights, if you will, and it adds an additional layer. And that additional layer might actually change, modify, or I would dare say reduce maybe some of those opportunities for an area, a very specific area that is very specifically defined, its purpose, its role, and what those changes would be. Can that be applied, we'll say, against a property owner's wishes? That would be where the attorney would need to weigh in. Generally, you have a wellspring of support for a community, or a property owner's group, or what have you, to want to be a part of an overlay, to say, "We want to be a special neighborhood designation," or "We want to be a historic designation." They arise in different ways, and again, as the years have gone on, the state law's ability to do one, or whatever, certainly has changed and been modified. So you're familiar with the 160D state law that is not very old. That law went a long way toward saying, "You really can't take away the rights of the zones that are already in place." So an overlay might enhance, or spell differently, some of the things that you expect, but it might not be able to sort of, you know, pull back some of those rights, if you follow what I'm saying. So the classic example that you would certainly appreciate is, say, a historic district that says, you know, "These are the materials that are historically present in a community. These are the way the homes look. You know, you have to use a certain shingle, and you have to have a certain shutter, and all of that, so that it matches, or there's a variation on a theme, to something that has already been established and has historic significance." You wouldn't put an adobe-style home right in the middle of a Charleston, you know, row of houses, if you had that designation. Without that type of designation, well, then every property owner sort of gets to do what they'd like to do, or whatever the zoning ordinance will allow them. So, you know, I don't want it to be a mystery that an overlay, or specifically a historic overlay, that's kind of the one I want to touch on. Yes, it can afford protection, but it can also raise the level of expense and expectation on doing something simple like... that's kind of the one I want to touch on. Yes, it can afford protection, but it can also raise the level of expense and expectation on doing something simple like, maybe you want to add gutters to the house. Well, did gutters exist fifty, sixty years ago? And, you know, you have to have these rational conversations of, "Well, you know, I don't want the rain falling down at the base of the house and degrading the livability." But the truth of the matter is, maybe gutters weren't indicative of that particular era. So, it takes a lot of discussion. It takes a lot of research to find out exactly what you're looking to do and how it would do. So, again, just make no mistake, specifically speaking, to a historic designation, there are advantages and protections, but there are also limitations.
And just a quick little follow-up on that. And this may be the next step, not part of this plan, but I've heard preservation quite a bit. Would this hypothetical overlay, for example, could it act as a protection for, like, for example, somebody wanting to buy eight homes and tear them down, rebuild something new? That's the kind of scenario I'm thinking about out loud is, is would that overlay, or is it possible to have some sort of mechanism in the future that it's a review if you remove a house? Or, I'm just trying to go back to this preservation word that I've heard quite a bit, and I'm not sure how to ask the question, but that's...
So, I would say, and I'd love Eric to pitch in too, there is a, you know, preservation means a lot of things. And there is a wealth of work and research that would need to go into how far constrained you can be. Again, I referenced the 160D legislation. There's the general statutes that our attorney would need to weigh in on. Preservation efforts are happening all throughout our state. Sometimes, when you look at larger cities, they have special legislation that allows them to do things that a town the size of Huntersville doesn't have the same rights to. But getting to the 160Ds specifically and sort of, I think, your question, it is not, "We just want to make sure that, you know, everything is developed in the way that is best for the community" or what have you, and sort of completely erode those... And I don't like to call them developer rights. I would say categorize them more as the landowner. You know, everybody who owns the land has a different idea of what they'd like to do. And so, the conversation to say collectively, "We want to protect X, Y, and Z," is what is going to drive that overlay's possibilities. If there's, you know, nineteen different voices, then it's going to be very challenging. The town board will ultimately have to see how far they're willing to create a different set of rules for that. So, Eric, have you got a couple of examples locally that...
Sure. Well, I think the primary thing to think about is just the process. So, say you get, a homeowner wants to tear down their historic home. What do you have in place to allow the community to, you know, consider options of saving the home? So, you know, in the city of Charlotte, you know, the Historic Landmark Commission can delay that demolition for a year. That's, you know, and I don't know what your agreements are already in place with Historic Landmarks Commission here. But you can look at just procedural ways to actually work on that. Now, a good thing about that is that we have actually saved some historic homes. So, in First Ward, we had some shot, you know, those shotgun homes. We saved those, and the homes were moved to a property owned by the land trust. So, that's an example of what you could, can do with that kind of enforcement mechanism in place. So, you know, the West Side Community Land Trust has actually received a lot of homes that way. So, that is an example of something practical that can result just by having that extra layer of protection, delaying the demolition for a year. So, now, the historic designations also empower the town to actually act on that, so to create structures. And I, you know, they don't necessarily have to be linked to the overlay. But it does definitely make it a legitimate, you know, legitimate tool to actually address the fact that we want to preserve the homes. And that, you know, the state enables you to do that. So, I do think that the community does have the option of actually working with the homeowners to designate their homes. That's something that they could initiate, working with state resources. And as well, there is also some work to be thought about to improve the cemeteries as well. So, those can be designated, you know, they need fifty years before you can designate them, but I think all the cemeteries here are old enough to be designated. So, they can also work on that as well with the churches.
So, stay up here for a second. So, how about, rather than individual homes and individual historic designation, how about designating an historic district in here?
Right.
I mean, that would put the ultimate protection on the whole neighborhood.
Exactly.
And much better than overlay could because that's kind of like getting past 160D with downzoning. It's almost just putting the clamp on it.
Right.
Sorry.
That's okay. I mean, Lee actually made one of the statements I was going to make, and that is the concept of 160D suggests that you're going to have a historic council in place to make a determination as to whether the district really should even exist. And if it does, then what are the conditions in which it will exist? So, it kind of compels the town to really do more work in establishing that entity to then put in place the over, yeah, I shouldn't use the word overlay, but the wrapping around trying to ensure that the community is deemed to be truly historic. I'm just going to back up a little bit, but Lee stole that piece of my thunder here, and I think on the same page on that. But I think the other thing is I'm a little bit befuddled, so to speak, because I hear, and I heard this last week as well, a number of key and important aspects of the plan to the community, things such as attainable housing to continue to exist, things such as continue to protect the historic aspect of it. But I'm having a hard time trying to connect this plan because, honestly, if I look at the plan, I think it's more of a community plan as opposed to a preservation plan. Because what I'm hearing very little of is how to actually say, and I hear the words about, "Well, find the right organizations, and you guys will be able to save things." But in terms of the board taking action, I'm just trying to figure out, what exactly are we saying we want? Because what I'm hearing the community say is that we want to be able to afford to live here, want to see improvements made, want to make sure and keep the identity which it has for years to have. But the plan doesn't necessarily reflect as much of that as the community has highly emphasized. So, help me with binding those two together because if we're taking an action tonight saying we're agreeing that this plan is a good preservation plan, then I'm a little bit disconnected from that.
Let me start responding, you know, in two parts. The first thing you said, I just want to make sure that the planning board understands. The Mecklenburg County Landmarks Commission is our current de facto historic committee. So, the town does not have its own. We rely on them and they process for us. But that does not mean that we can't have our own. So, as we are, you know, getting bigger and evolve, we could certainly look to do that. And the plan touches on that as well. So, I just want to make sure everybody knew that we had someone in that role. Obviously, if they're serving the entire county, you know, that doesn't give us a lion's share of the attention. But to begin to sort of touch on your second question, which is a great point, I think that you, if you read the plan with, sort of in two views, the plan does not strongly, if I can put words into your comment, commit the town to doing various parts of the plan. But there's nothing in the plan that prohibits the town. In other words, what you'll see through the tools is the town will work with, the town will connect, the town will help explore resources, et cetera. But anywhere in here, based upon the priorities of the town board, the town could say, "We are going to do X and Y and Z," in, you know, in concert with Mecklenburg County or whoever the partner that would be appropriate would be. So, the plan definitely, in my opinion, does not preclude a more aggressive or a wider-ranging stance by the town in any of the aspects. But it is, I think it's trying to say, we're not, standing still is not the right word, but we're walking slowly right now. But for us to really start to speed up and achieve a lot of things, we just need to tackle as much as we can, and it is based on the wants of the town board. But to the planning board's role tonight, there is, in your recommendation, you can certainly speak to that. If you would like to see the plan commit more on certain levels, you certainly have that prerogative. This is, it all lies at the feet of the town board. They're the ones who are going to adopt it or not. And if they do adopt it, what does it say? And how strongly does it say it? So, again, the planning board certainly has an ability to express, emphasize, and share your emphasis or your concern or your, you know, if it's not this, then I do have trouble supporting it, whatever the case may be. I hope that got to some of the question you had.
It did, but I'm, again, a little bit concerned. Again, after hearing this hearing, being in two hearings now, the one last week and this week, one of the big overarching concerns I've gotten, I'm just trying to figure out how best the board can attempt to reconcile them, is, yes, this is a good plan, but in the meantime, the community itself is living in fear that somebody's going to gobble up the house next door, gobble up the next house. The plan really doesn't do anything with respect to addressing the most significant hurdle that the community right in the house in front of it. How does it protect it from some developers saying, "In two months from now, hey, I got a lot of money flash around. Let me go in, let me just buy all this stuff up" before those folks downtown decide to go do something crazy?
And that is a specific challenge of all of this. As, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but the inherent zoning and the rights that the property owners have cannot be pulled away overnight. You have to work through a process. Not only, if the town board has all the will to do some things like that, you have to come to a technique or an approach that's legal and consistent with general statutes that will allow the board to be, we'll say, very aggressive on sort of protecting or making sure that that scenario doesn't happen. It's not going to happen overnight, to get to your point. And that is one of the frustrating elements is it is tough to take away in a, you know, I don't think, this is talking out of school, that the state of North Carolina very much leans developer-friendly. And to protect as much as you'd like to can be challenging. So, that is just a reality that, you know, we all face, communities across the state face. But it doesn't change the fact that you're striving, you're working. And the emphasis of this board to the town board can be made loud and clear that you would like, not a suggestion, but a statement. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I'm just echoing the sentiment that I heard. Prince, do you have a question?
Yeah, it's just a follow-up, you know, because many of the concerns from the community, you know, people in the town, it's about, "How do we fit in this entire plan?" And our concerns, based on your research, your engagement with the community, you know, you have historic, you have different issues or teams that you came up with. What would you say would be like the overarching team that you could preserve, you know, in the community? Like a recommendation to, maybe the board? What was that, you know, major concern of all members you engage with? What can you say today?
Well, what they expressed this evening to preserve the homes, that was the primary concern that we heard repeatedly. I will say that the plan is organized so that you can, the town knows what directly it can support, what it can act on. So, every tool has a town role, you know, clearly defined. And the way that it is organized, the toolkit for regulatory control is one toolkit so that the town can immediately start focusing on that. So, I think it's organized in a way that actually gives everybody a space to work in, community and the town, but also engaging others. So, and that, you'll find that in every toolkit. We even, you know, broke it down by steps. And those actions are defined in the back of the document with the specific items that you need to address for each toolkit. So, it's, I think it's, yes, preservation is not easy. There's a reason why, you know, I got together with ten citizens to try to create a community land trust because we were frustrated with all the inability for the, you know, you just have to do the work. But I will say that, you know, we started in 2016, and now we have, you know, sixty homes. So, it's doable. And the timeframes that we put are actually labeled and, you know, to reach those goals. So, whether it's in two years or five years or ten years, all those steps are outlined. And yes, there are hundreds of steps. And I acknowledge that that's one of the weaknesses of the plan. It seems to not have focus, but it's actually broken down so that the community that can prioritize that with the town decide which steps to advance. And every year, they can update the plan. So, it's a living document. Yes, we wrote it as a menu, which may not be as effective for a small area plan in terms of, but it's actually written that way because it's realistic. And we are, we took the considerations of what the community, their organizational capacity. We had that in mind with every step. And more than that, we actually sat and learned from communities that have done it well. And we took a lot of the recommendations that you see. A lot of the tools were taken also from those experts, those community advocate experts that we invited. So, yeah, that did expand the plan a little bit. But what you see is everything that we heard, everything that, all the strategies that were outlined that we captured in community comments. And I, you know, I'll say that is very difficult. Preservation requires, you know, all hands on deck. So, everybody does have to play a part.
Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. In the discussion, I, it sounds like that there's already a current committee that's involved with developing this. And my suggestion may be, if it's not already attached to the plan, can we recommend that the town has a committee in conjunction with your committee? Get the community to engage and participate throughout the five years or however long this plan is going to go so that there's continual town, Mecklenburg County, members of the community, all collaborating together through the course of the, of the plan.
So, well, to answer that question, there is nothing that would prohibit that. You could certainly do that. What the plan very specifically says is there needs to be a unified voice. But it doesn't go any further than that because there's a lot of ways to do that. And as we referenced at the very top of the presentation, there are already several standing groups who have their own little, you know, boards or leaders or what have you. And so, they could form the first version of that coalition, their representation, and there you go. And now, as they vote, then it's take it to the town, and their priorities are set. But you could kind of start from scratch if you wanted and ask every resident, "Would you like to serve?" You could, you know, sprinkle in some county representations in town. There is no limitation to how you want to do that. The importance is that it is the representative voice from the community so that when they say, "Our number one priority is this," the town knows that as we move resources toward it, it is not a voice in the woods. It is really the way the residents would like to see it. And we know nothing will be 100% because you can't go to the North Stone HOA and ask them a question and get 100%. Not picking on North Stone, but you get the point is you're looking for the representative body. And because the Pottstown community is, it's not like a subdivision that's only ten years old that has a very strict structure and... old, that has a very strict structure in terms of how things are voted on, we are sort of creating that, that structure after the fact.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, as I look at the proposal, I've gone through it, or at least the final report, I've looked at a few management-style proposals, and to me, I always look for two sections very specifically, anytime I would see one. One is the executive summary, which is always up front. This doesn't have an executive summary, it doesn't really talk about what the real understanding was between the client and with the consultant, just doesn't. It just give you, this gives lots of content, no doubt about it. And typically, at the end, the consultant would usually know what is the most significant aspects of the proposal to the client, and hence have a very targeted plan for those areas that are deemed to be most significant and most important. Neither of those two really exist in this, and I think for what we're trying to do now, those two sections would prove to be highly valuable, because it gives us a clear understanding of the expectations on both sides, but it also gives a very targeted approach to what is deemed to by the community and perhaps by the board members themselves, to be the most significant issues to be addressed. It's, you're right, it's in here, but it's in here in such a way that it's very difficult to try to get your arms around it, so.
I mean, there's an executive summary on page of the thing.
Yeah, there's an executive summary, but also an implementation.
I got another one, I guess. So, I think time is of the urgency here, is, the focus of the Pottstown folks is preservation, which means somehow restricting development, and even a historic district would take a couple of years to establish, right? The quickest thing I can think to do is for each individual to go in here and downzone, especially those in NR and go to GR. That would restrict it somewhat, and that would give you something, because if this, if this sales tax increase passes in November and they start getting real about the red line, time is going to be of the essence. So, at least if everybody was GR, you could tamp down what you could and couldn't do if somebody were to go in and sweep up five or six lots, my suggestion.
So, one more thought. I'm assuming the recommendation would be, I'm looking at this more like a analysis rather than a plan. Analysis of what's there, and then analysis of where to go, but not a directive plan. Is that the intent? Like, I see it as, this is the area, here's all these different components, you know, the historic areas, the churches, the parks, the homes, and you've got the community and the community voices, and we're making awareness of the Pottstown community. This is, this brings awareness, but to get to the next step is, is where I'm struggling a little bit. And it's, I know this is not the plan to get there. I know this is, this is, this is, this is an analysis to say, if you want to get there, here's steps, here are the tools to get there. Is that somewhat accurate?
Yes. What we did say is, we prioritize creating the community coalition, so that is the first step, and that is the step to start prioritizing what elements to advance. We don't want to necessarily do it for them, they have to do it, you know, it has to come from the community.
Other questions, thoughts?
Just the traffic calming, I wanted to talk about that. I mean, has that been used other places and been, you know, vetted? I, I mean, I saw that, and I guess in an ideal world, it looks okay, but I feel like if you had two people walk in, riding bikes on either side of the street, and cars coming, it could be very confusing. I mean, we put lines on the road so people stay in the road, and less decisions, the better. Now you're telling people to stay in the middle of the road unless there's another car coming, and then cross a dotted line with maybe a pedestrian there that might be in a blind spot. I, I just, I mean, I just have a little worry about that.
Well, and again, that might not be something that the planning board would see as one of the highest priorities. The community, there was a meeting last night within the community to discuss that particular approach. There are examples around the state, and I am not the expert on that, but our long-range transportation planner in our department is very attuned to it. But what the plan, or, excuse me, what the meeting last night was basically centered around was, this is the way it could look, and so we need to test it and give it a shot. And it is sort of, it's a low investment, if you will, so if you put it into play and it, it's confusing or not doing exactly what you'd like, then it doesn't have to continue. So, again, it's just an example of one that was already in the hopper and is moving forward. The plan has embraced it and supported it as among, you know, all kinds of traffic calming elements. You know, the town has historically approached the community about what you might say is the typical cross-section of a street, to say, here's your roads, here's your planting strips, here's your sidewalk, and maybe there'd be some infrastructure improvements within. The difficulty, of course, is the streets in Pottstown go in and out of town, that's something. And then you have the individual property owners who perhaps see things differently. And so, if you don't have the right of way, or you don't have the easements you need, then you're limited. So, again, this is just sort of tackling a safety issue within the constraints that you can, and it's by no means the final answer, per se. Maybe it works great, and that's all you need, but maybe it's just a way to get the awareness and the change to turn the corner before something else a little more significant can be put into place. Again, it gets back to communicating to the, from the residents, to the planning board, to any other stakeholder, communicating to the town board, where do we rank all of these tools? Where do we want to see everything's, you know, going in a direction? Eric alluded to the fact that this plan and any other small area plan that the town has ever adopted, they don't sit on a shelf. I mean, they're referenced every time there's something happening in or near those communities, and you shouldn't let them sit around for 10 years and then come back. You check it out, and, I mean, this is going to be a plan very specifically, that if you came back in a two-year time period, there's going to be a lot of checkmarks on things that are already in process. So, is it everything? No, and, you know, and we certainly don't have plans that probably achieve all of the goals. But you want to have it all out there, to be discussed, to be debated, and hopefully the lift is for everybody, for the betterment of the community and the town as well.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up question?
Just another question for Eric that I've been thinking about. So, you know, obviously, it's a good plan, a lot of tools, a lot of directions we could go. Have you ever done any plans that are a lot more like pointed and said, hey, this is what you need to do in the next 12 months to start this process, or they're always kind of open-ended like this, you know, more high-level, what some might perceive as smoke and mirrors, but, I mean, the toolkit's there, and you're kind of pointing this in the right direction, but you're not setting deadlines. Has there ever been one that set deadlines?
Well, yeah, we do frame it in terms of, you know, by milestones to be reached. I think we did take a stab at that in this plan. So, not to say that it can't be rethought in a lot of respects, but the highest priority were saving the homes, and so therefore, we definitely put that in the overlay district as one of the low-hanging fruit things that you can act on. You know, I will say that it is a very special plan, because, yes, we could, we could have identified a lot of projects in the community, but that's not the input that we receive, I'll emphasize again, and that's not why you hired us, it was a preservation plan.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just one last question, because our neighbor up the street, Cornelius, has a very similar kind of environment in the way of Smithfield. Help me to understand, or help us to appreciate, the delta between Smithfield and Pottstown.
I would say that the delta there is that they had an expert developer on their pocket. Not that that developer expert who had done a lot of these kinds of plans before, not that he didn't have a friction with the community, there was definitely a lot of organizational challenges there in that community, but I think they did leverage a lot of resources just because they had a development approach. Now, unfortunately, Willie Jones passed away, and with that, also passed away a lot of the know-how, but the community is still, you know, galvanized, I think, around the plan now. They were able to get county funding for that, so that's maybe a venue to, you know, talk with your partners. And, and they also were just very, very loud advocates for protecting Smithville.
Guess the real question is, how does what we have in the way of this proposal, you know, similar or different, or the same as what they, what they use as a tool to get them started?
So, I'll say that what's very different is that you have community organizations here that are doing some, some of that kind of work, but they just, the delta is, you know, because they, they aren't actually directly building affordable housing. So, that's, that's one thing that is, one of the recommendations is that they create their, you know, a CDC, or a community land trust as well, that can act as a development partner. So, I think that's, that's the key thing to have, and the Smithville was getting that, getting that started.
Okay. Anybody else, or do we have motion?
And some of this is not to, we can continue the discussion, but I think we're beyond the question. So, in considering the, the planning board, and considering the Pottstown Community Preservation Plan, the planning board recommends approval of the plan as presented. Do I need a consistency statement?
That would be good, and the 2040 plan certainly speaks to the creation of small area plans, the creation of the betterment of housing options, stabilizing communities that exist already. You can sort of touch on some of those goals.
What you said. Let's see.
Housing options in existing communities.
The plan is consistent with the Huntersville 2040 Community Plan, specifically.
Housing options.
Yeah, providing housing options.
Preserving existing communities.
And preserving existing communities.
You could mention, you know, expanding infrastructure appropriately.
And expanding infrastructure appropriately. Period.
Thank you.
I'll second, just to get discussion going.
A lot of good points up here. This is by far perfect, but again, listening to the community, nothing's really, there's been a lot of discussion, but not, a lot has been done about bringing attention to Pottstown, and I think this does that. Their plan even talks about, you know, going out and seeking funding from, maybe it's the county, maybe it's the state, maybe it's the federal. I think having something like this that's formal, that's adopted by the town, gives the community, gives the town, everybody, something that can go out and say, yes, this is organized, this is an area that we want to be focused on. So, and like Michael said, it would be nice if there was some concrete, like, this is what we're going to do in the next six months, 12 months, but again, this at least gets us off of start, like, we're at least moving forward now, and then it's up to the board, it's up to the community, everyone else to follow through and make sure we hold this board, and the next board, and every other board going forward, like, hey, you guys adopted this plan, we talked about these tools, now come and let's put these tools to work. So, again, it's not perfect, but I think it's at least, it's moving us forward. So, I'm in support of Pottstown, I would love to be preserved, and one last thing, you know, at the end of the day, it is, Pottstown is owned by a lot of individuals that have private property rights, and not everybody is always in agreement. Your neighbor may want to tear their own house down and build up a McMansion, you may not, so there is always going to be that struggle, and that's unfortunate, so.
Yes, thank you. In, in thinking about the motion, though, and to help the homeowners maybe feel a little bit more comfortable that we're taking action, I'd like to put a deadline on a formation of a committee, and what that committee may look like, and how we establish it, to go to the town board, and if there's any other adds that we need to put into the plan to set to the town board that we think might be doable.
So, do we need to amend the motion? Is that what you're?
I mean, yeah, I would like, yeah, I would like to amend the motion to include a...
Are you, are you looking to set a deadline, or strongly encourage?
Strongly encourage that a committee be formed in so many days. I don't know what that looks like, or how quickly we can get it established, but to know that we're moving forward with the timeline.
And is this the citizens committee, or is this the neighborhood committee?
Establish the committee, and I know Mecklenburg County's currently involved in addition to business owners, but I would like the neighborhood to be involved and invited to encourage to sit on the committee, as well as staff. If staff has time, of course.
Out of your motion, do you?
There's a lot in there.
Yeah, maybe we cleaned up a little bit, which is fine. No, no, and I'm not being critical, because mine was not cleaned by any means. Does the plan, again, excuse me, is the plan reference a committee? Like, we talk about a committee, or we just saying there's going to be a committee, or is there something we can reference in the plan that talks about this?
Well, you made, the coalition, and the term coalition is referring mainly to the representatives of the community. If the town needs to create some type of committee that interacts with them on a regular basis, or whatever, I mean, that can all go hand in hand. You could certainly pass that along as just sort of a point of emphasis, but when, if the board prioritizes all of that, then they'll certainly flesh all of that out. The community itself may want to say, let's, let's get the county representative, let's get a town representative, what have you, to sort of enhance what they are.
So, Jennifer, I think what I'm hearing you saying is that you want kind of a formal standing committee that may include community?
Yes.
Staff, town board members, planning board members, not required to.
Right, I'd like to establish in the motion that we're forming a committee and put a deadline on it, so that the plan itself has quickly some momentum to move forward with the plan. And however y'all decide we want to word it, or what the committee needs to look like, maybe leave it open-ended to the town board, I'm good with that. I just want to make sure we put an emphasis in the motion that we're forming a committee to move forward.
That is Toolkit A5, by the way, Advisory Board, so it's in here.
A5.
So, it's an advisory board. Again, I'm trying to name this, okay. It is. We're not, before we amend it, let's have a little discussion still. What do, and I'm not opposed to it, what do we think is a realistic recommendation for the town board, that this advisory committee, Lee? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, it's called, yeah, an advisory board, actually.
Advisory board.
A5 is advisory board. Yeah, just, I think, just put emphasis on the urgency of developing a board, you know, just emphasize it, really, is all we need to do.
Yeah, and I would be, I agree with that, I agree with that, too.
That's a motion. Do we have that cleared, Tricia? Okay, great. And?
So, we're including a statement to say that an emphasis is made that potential to five, that a community is more likely to be reduced staff and other.
Perfect. A second.
Second, okay. Motion and a second discussion.
Again, another amend. In light of the discussions that previously had in the prior community meeting, in this community meeting, to have a small addendum added to the plan, which specifically talks to the two or three most significant issues as communicated in those two meetings, such that the commissioners will have an opportunity to have more information with respect
So not revising the plan, just as part of the presentation to the board.
Right.
Oh, amended.
Yep. Amend, amend the preservation such that you're adding, add an addendum to it that shows that these were two things that were discovered as part of the community sessions and hence the consultant has opined on those and had made the following observations and recommendations.
And that's the regardless of staff and the reservation afterwards? Or is it?
Yes. That'll show up when everything else shows up.
That's, that's the preservation goals, I believe.
Well, no, it should be more than the goals because the goals does nothing more than say, here's the direction we're moving in. What this is specifically pointing to is based on the feedback that's been received from the community as well as from the board. Here's their view about a more pointed approach to the next steps. All it's doing is just focusing. It's not saying, hey, here's what we like to do, but based on what we heard, here's what we would recommend that you now consider in addition to what we've already written.
Okay.
He's nodding along with it. He gets it.
Yeah.
He, he gets it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have that ready for final action.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll, I just, I think it's a great plan. It's not a concept of a plan or whatever you want to call it, but it outlines everything wonderfully. I think the toolkits are great rather than bumbling around for what I should do next. I mean, it lays out all your options here for you. So I think it's a, a very useful, um, piece of information and I think it's, I think it'll be well-received by the town board.
I agree. It is great. The tools will, you know, guide the next decisions and bringing the awareness is, is a great, uh, great momentum as a starting point and a launching point. Anything else?
One final thing. I appreciate the community coming out and I hope you think we've heard it and hopefully we'll relay it to the town. And government is slow. I get it. And I, I hate it for you because again, I know you want it to be done tomorrow and there's things you're like, hey, why don't you go do this? And it is slow-moving, but at least I do think, at least maybe there is some momentum now. This will be something that we can all reference. So thank you guys for your involvement.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're ready for a vote. Um, all of those in favor of the motion? And those opposed? Okay, unanimous. That concludes that.
If I could just, the final comment is a reminder that next week, uh, is at the town board meeting, a week from tonight, uh, this will be in front of the town board for possible final action. It'll be their discretion at that point.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next is other business. Um, I'll just do a quick reminder on the 28th, our quasi-judicial hearing, 6:00 PM across the street, third floor on the, in the rotunda, third floor diagonally across. Um, that's it. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Adjourn. Opposed? We're good. Thank you all.